Good evening, everyone. This is our April 18th, 2023 meeting of East Long Meadow Planning Board. In attendance, Russ Denver, Cassandra Chersaw, Pete Henderson, Billy Mitchell, and me, Mafazio, and myself, John Torja. Just before we get started, is anybody besides LCAT recording? I also know that Bailey's recording for meeting minute purposes. Is there anybody in the audience or on Zoom that is recording? Hearing none. We will go into the approval of the April 4th, 2023 meeting minutes. So they should have been distributed to everybody. Does anybody have any additions, revisions, edits?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to
I'll second.
And seconded to approve it. April 4th, 2023 meeting minutes. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. So three yeses, one abstention. Okay. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Case SP RW 2023-13. Request for a site plan review waiver for Dutch Co Electric LLC, a home office at 50 Heatherstone Drive, Assessor's Parcel ID 38-25-19, located in a residence AA zoning district. Applicant Andrew Dutch Co, 50 Heatherstone Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Is either the applicant or somebody, if you don't mind just coming up to the desk there? I believe we have a microphone there.
I think.
Or I think yeah, it's recording, so. I think you speak into it, yes.
Okay.
So usually how this works is just want to identify yourself for the record and then just kind of explain the business, what you'd be doing on the property and things of that nature.
Andrew Dutch Co, I'm the owner of the company. I've had a business license there since 2010. I renew it every four years. This particular time when I renewed it, it got flagged by the building inspector saying that the business has grown. I do have employees. They take my van home, so I don't even have a van at the property. And they requested, they requested that I come to the planning board meeting.
So this is just simply a home office function? There's no employees that are doing
Nobody's present there. Nobody goes there. It's the same that I've been doing for 13 years.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions that carry unanimously?
Alright, thanks.
Good evening.
You too.
Case SP 2023-02. Request for a site permit or special permit amendment to remove special condition number 12 of SP 2012-04 HCRD Book 19308, page 49, granted to 13 North Main Street. Assessor's Parcel IDs 27-37-0 and 27-38-0 located in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Pride Operating LLC, care of GPM Investments LLC, 1410 Commonwealth Drive, Suite 202 Wilmington, North Carolina 28403.
Okay, is there somebody, either the applicant or somebody representing the applicant? Oh, they're on Zoom. Good evening. Are you, I think you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. My name is Charles Rogers. I'm an attorney representing Pride Operating LLC. Do you need any more information about me?
No, so just normally how this works, if you could kind of give the board, the audience here this evening, sort of just a quick explainer of what you're looking to do here.
Sure. Pride Operating acquired this property earlier this year and operates a convenience store at 13 North Main Street. In 2012, a prior owner, Pride Convenience, Inc., not affiliated with Pride Operating LLC, obtained a special permit to allow construction of a colonial porch gable on the building. It's my understanding that colonial porch gable was in fact installed. The permit contained a condition, and that's condition 12, that any change, and I'll read it verbatim, "Any change in ownership of 50% or more of the common stock of East Long Meadow Mobile, Inc., without the prior approval of the planning board shall be a violation of this special permit and shall be caused to revoke or modify this special permit." As far as we know, East Long Meadow Mobile, Inc. had no interest in the property when the special permit was issued in 2012. We don't really know the history or why that condition was imposed, but certainly today, East Long Meadow Mobile, Inc. has no interest in the property. And so we've requested that that condition be formally deleted by an amendment to the special permit.
I'm going to bring it back to the board. Does the board have any questions?
I do.
So Attorney Rogers, it's my understanding that when you request an amendment to a special permit, it reopens the hearing for the special permit. So a number of years ago, Robert Bolduc, the former owner of Pride, stood in front of the planning board and we addressed a number of safety concerns regarding the entrances and exits at North Main Street at that site. He admitted in a public meeting that there indeed were safety issues and that he would look into it and do something about it. He has never done anything about it. It is so bad that one of the entrances and exits actually has a crosswalk into the middle of the exit entrance. And so for the last four or five years, that has, that safety issue has continued. So you will not get my vote for that amendment until you come back with a plan to do something about the safety issues on those two entrances and exits.
Yeah, I would echo with what Russ said. I think there's some, we've found previous, sort of previous instances where this property has come up, that there's been some concerns about safety hours of operation of that amount. So I think some of us that have been here for some time come with a healthy bit of skepticism. I don't know if other members have any questions.
I just saw Russ's sentiments on it. And nothing was ever done by Bob Bolduc.
Well, thank you all. This is, this is all news to me. You know, I was led to believe this was just a procedural issue. It clearly isn't. And I guess in light of your comments, what is it that you suggest that we do? Continue this, withdraw? I just
I'd be willing to continue. Well, we haven't opened a public hearing, but once we open the public hearing, I'd be willing to continue it so that your engineers, et cetera, could take a look at the traffic conditions there and make some recommendations about how to resolve the safety issues. And then come back to this board and we'll address them. But we can leave the matter of the deleting of the property owner name, you know, in place for the time being.
I would share that, those sentiments as well. I don't know, I wouldn't like though, unless there's any other specific comments or questions from the board. Do we want to, would we like to open it up to the public?
Yeah, I have to.
Yes. So right now, would
There's Julius Schwartz with his hand up. You know, so you can breathe in.
Okay, we can start on Zoom. So we'll open the public hearing and invite the person on Zoom in now. Hi Julius, I think we can hear you, but we can't see you. We can see you, but I don't, now we can't hear you.
I'm muted.
Okay, now am I good?
Yes.
Okay, I am sorry about that. My, my name is Julius Schwartz. I'm also an attorney for, for Pride Operating. And I just wanted to give you some information as far as Bob Baldric. He no longer owns the site. It was, it was, it was purchased by Pride Operating, which was owned by ArcLight, which has now been, that entity has been transferred and purchased by, by GPM Investments. So we're not aware of the history with Bob. Actually, my client and Mr. Rogers' client never, never, never dealt with Bob Baldric. And so if you could give us a little bit more light as to what you're looking for in terms of traffic safety, I can report it back because I, you know, we're, we're in the dark when it comes to this. We, we are trying to remove this change of control provision because it was an error. There was originally a special permit, I think it was from 2009 originally, or maybe even earlier, which had that change of control. Subsequently to that, it was left in, in the, in the, in a, an amended special permit or a new special permit in 2012, which didn't even relate to the same entity. We also, Pride Operating has another location, which, which does not have that restriction at all. And that one, that one is located in 618 North Main Street, and that special permit doesn't have that provision. So we're, that, it's obvious that that is an error, which we just wanted to correct. And we're happy to work with, with, with the board and with the town on safety concerns. But like I said, we kind of need to know what, what those are because we really have no clue. Nobody gave us any information on this. Thank you.
Russ kind of took it in while I can give the mic back.
How long do you have? It is, it is literally that bad. So I don't know if you've been to East Long Meadow ever before, but we are home of the worst traffic rotary in the world. And there are cars that come around the rotary, brake to enter into a exit entrance on North Main Street, where there is a crosswalk for schoolchildren. The crosswalk actually is painted into the entrance right there. So that's a major issue. There is an issue coming south on North Main Street where cars go up to the stop sign and to enter the rotary, and then some will hook a, you know, cross traffic to enter into that entrance, which is a safety issue. And then the first entrance exit of coming south into Pride is right across the street from another entrance to what is referred to as Center Square, a shopping plaza here in town. So those people that don't successfully exit into Pride from the rotary get the second exit entrance, which is across the street from the shopping center one. You've got people trying to cross from your store across to the shopping center and vice versa in a heavily, heavily congested area. And so there needs to be something done about either closing off entrances or exits or restructuring them so they're one way in and one way out. But I have to imagine if you run convenience stores, you do have traffic engineers on staff. And I would imagine if they came out and took a look at it, they would be able to quickly see some of the concerns the town has. I, I called the police chief to ask about his concerns because this was coming up. He wrote a letter to this planning board saying he didn't have an issue related to the change of ownership. But I asked him about concerns about the other two exits. He did express that there were indeed safety concerns and would love to have someone take a peek at them and work, possibly work with their traffic safety officer to come up with recommendations. No one is questioning the fact that it's new to you or it's not, you know, it's new to you. So no one's putting the blame on you. But since we can reopen the special permit through this amendment process, I thought it would be a wonderful idea to kind of touch base with you on this and see what you can do to resolve those safety issues before we act on the amendment.
Okay, so I, I understand. So, so who should, who should the contact person be? Should we, we, should we, should I, we reach out to the chief of police and, and try to get their traffic safety specialist? Or what, what's your
The town has a planning and community development director. His name is Bailey Mitchell. He's the first point of contact. He's sitting right here at the table.
Okay, thank you.
That would definitely be the most appropriate way to go about it.
Is, is there a direct phone number you can give me? Or I don't, I know it's public, but if it's public anyway, so.
I know it's online. It's on our eastlongmeadowma.gov under the planning and community development department.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I can give it to you actually right now because we have it down here. 413-525-5400, extension 1700.
Could you repeat the number one more time? I got the extension, but. Thank you very much.
Okay, does anybody from the audience here, public hearing is still open, have any comments? Seeing and hearing none.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until what date, Bailey?
We have May 2nd. We have May 16th.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to 6:00 PM on May 16th, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions that continuation carries unanimously? Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Case Site 2023-03. Request for a site plan review approval for the construction of a recycling center and associated site improvements at Deer Park Drive, Assessor's Parcel 11-6-4A, located in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District. Applicant Charles G. Arment Jr. and William T. Arment, 47 Warehouse Street, Springfield, Mass. 01118.
All right. So Attorney Levine, if you want to kick things off, I think we've got a mic.
Thank you.
So that you can begin the presentation.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman and to the rest of the board. Josh Levine of Levine Law here in East Long Meadow. I have the pleasure tonight of representing the applicants Charlie and Bill Arment doing business at CBA Realty. First brought this to the board in February 25th, on February 25th, 2022, in formal discussion when this was just an idea. And as you'll see tonight, the applicants have done a lot of work in the meantime. And you'll see where we're at now and they're excited to present this project. To give a broad overview of the project, the applicants are owners of a lot on Deer Park Drive. It's at the south end of Shaker Road, south end of town. Deer Park Drive was built by West Mass and it's a mix of commercial and industrial buildings. And for anyone who's never been all the way down that road, it ends in a cul-de-sac. And this project, this lot is on the left side of that cul-de-sac. And it abuts undeveloped land that was donated to the town by the original developer, West Mass. Today is termed a transfer station. So in short, customers bring truckloads of debris to the site and it's sorted for final disposal. Reusable items like wood and metal, certain types of concrete, other manmade materials, are pulled out and sent to the appropriate destination for reuse or recycling as they are, as possible. And anything that is not a further use, that's sent on to a landfill. So the result of this sorting, with any transfer station as well as this one, is that there's a lot less material to go into the ground and a lot more that goes on to have a second life. And I just want to note at this point that nothing hazardous will be accepted at this transfer station. So I'll explain a little bit about how the sorting will actually happen. At the entrance of the facility, there's a small gatehouse with one employee who will direct traffic around the site. The vehicle boat will be weighed and they do that to determine the fee. And then it's sent on to one of the loading docks in the larger sorting facility. The trucks are then unloaded in the building and the materials are sorted by employees in the building. And I have, the board is interested, I have some pictures of the actual machines that are, that are used. It's pretty wild to look at. After sorting, the materials are loaded onto train cars that will be pulled right into the building. And once the train cars are full, the cars will go south to their final destinations as appropriate for what the loads are. And there's also a second spur of the train track that will hold cars just outside the main sorting facility. And that's for cars that have yet to be loaded. And I want to note at this point that the track terminates at the sorting facility and does not go across Deer Park. This lot is currently vacant and has been since West Mass, sorry, buildings, since West Mass developed the industrial park. It's in the INDG or Industrial Garden Park District. This project is a by right industrial use. And the applicants, of course, fully intend to abide by all INDG bylaws. Before I turn this over to the consultants, VHB, to present the plans and studies, I'd just like to make a few final points. From all of my conversations with the applicants, it is evident that this project has been designed from the outset to minimize disruption to this town. First of all, this is a 24-hour sorting facility. 24 hours is only for sorting. Truck deliveries, deliveries are limited to 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So it's a nine-hour window. Second, this lot is set back on way back on Deer Park Drive. It's about as far as from any residential developments as you can get in that, in this town. Third, the truck loading, unloading and sorting and the train loading all takes place indoors. That's further minimizing any disturbance to the rest of the town residents who are passing through. And I think most importantly, sorting the materials onto the, the train cars, that greatly minimizes the truck traffic that's leaving the facility. Rather than loading material and debris onto different trucks than we're, or in their loading onto tractor trailers, the trains will stay off the load entirely. And that really will cut down on traffic and wear and tear. The Arments and their businesses have been an integral part of this town for a long time, for decades, and the surrounding community as well. And they hope that this project will continue to be a positive force in this town. And the project only adds to their good, what I hope is a good reputation. If there are no further questions at this time, I can introduce John Furman, the Director of Land Development, VHB. Before that happens, does anybody on the board have any questions that kind of looks before?
Just going to wait till after the presentation.
Good evening. While the projector's warming up, let me introduce myself. My name is John Furman, the Director of Land Development for VHB's office in Springfield. Also the engineer of record for the project. With me tonight, two members from my team, Michael Santos, a professional engineer. And he's a traffic engineer for the project. And behind him, Molly Paz, who is a traffic designer for the project. And collectively, they worked on the, on the presentation and the traffic study. What I'd like to do tonight is go through the site plans first, give you some specifics. Attorney Levine did a great job on presenting that. And then turn it over to Michael, who will go through the traffic and the site. We have one technical issue here. It does not seem to be acknowledging the core. There we go. All solved. All right. Very good. So the Attorney Levine provided a great summary of the project. I'm just going to rifle through a few of these first. This is the actual lot. This is Deer Park Drive. And this is the end of it. This is the railway. As a point of history, if you would, VHB designed the extension of Deer Park Drive from the wetland crossing to this point of the cul-de-sac here back in 2005 for West Mass. So we were, we were the engineers of record that created this extension, all the lots that went through it, the stormwater management collection system, the sewer system, the water distribution, and the crossing of the rail through here and all the utilities. So we have a history on this project that dates back quite a bit. This is the parcel right now. The property lines aren't showing on it, but it basically follows this. This area here is an existing detention basin that was built as part of the Deer Park construction. And the intended function of that detention basin was to treat stormwater that was collected within the roadway, as well as a portion of stormwater from either of the two lots on the end. When we get to the stormwater management piece, I'll show you how we've calculated that and how we've taken what was originally designed into account. So the parcel is devoid of any buildings right now and it's being used for, as a processing center. Has a D C P assigned to it. And basically we're taking the materials, soil, concrete, wood, sorting them, processing them, and then shipping them out. As you can see from this aerial photo, all of that's being done outside. And it, everything that is brought in by truck also leaves by truck. The next slide that I have is the actual site plan. So this is the layout materials plan for it. What we're proposing is a brand new building of about 31,000 square feet. All these triangles here are access doors where trucks can come in, dump their load and then leave. This right here is a 500 square foot scale building. This area right here is the scale. So as a truck comes down Deer Park Drive, they can pull in and get weighed. They are directed onsite. These are pavement markings to any of these doors by onsite personnel. They back into the building, they unload, they pull it back out if they're cleared. If there's not another vehicle coming in, then they get weighed and the difference is the tally for that load. We also have an entrance and an exit lane on the side of this as well. Attorney Levine mentioned rail cars. And we have that represented on this, this plan as well. This area right here is the existing rail right-of-way line. What we are proposing to do is to basically cut in a switch to the, to the rail and then bring a spur into the site. These dark triangles are switches. From there, we have another switch. This is an outside staging line and it's surrounded, it's actually depressed. It's four feet below the finished floor of the building. So as the machinery inside can actually just lift it, they don't have to lift over a 12-foot high car. The rail car is depressed. This other rail, which you see right here, actually is brought into the building and the cars sit, the cars sit right through here. When the cars are loaded, if they're not ready to be picked up, they can be dragged out and stored on the outside and then Pine and Valley Railroad on order picks them up and brings them to their, to their destination. The site is basically split into about 50/50 with respect to paving and packed gravel. This line here represents the area where all of this is paved. This area back here is gravel, very similar to what is out there right now. This last 150 feet, I believe, is easement belonging to Eversource. So our development line basically stops in the middle of this. So the actual gravel line is right here. These areas in front, if you look at the aerial right now, they're basically gravel and disturbed area right up to the property line. These evolved and converted into green space and lawn. One of the particulars of this zone were that if the building itself has loading doors, it needs to be set back 300 feet from the setback. Not only the setback lines that you'd have in the zoning code. So we actually have the dimension here that shows that we are set back 300 feet from the, from the right-of-way line of Deer Park. So we comply with all zoning and we're not asking for any relief on that. I'm going to go to the next I'm going to go to the next slide, which is basically, oops, jumped in the tube. Our grading and drainage plan. Um, so I'd mentioned before that, uh, the, uh, the, the construction of Deer Park included that detention basin. And, um, let me see if I escape out of this and go through this. This is a stormwater management report that was filed with the applications that you have in front of you. Uh-oh. Do I have to turn this off again?
I'm not sure why they still on your laptop right?
Yeah, I switched screens though. Yes, I should. Show this one? There we go. All right. Well, I won't do that. All right. What I was going to show you was the existing drainage figure out of the, uh, drainage report. But let me describe it to you on this, this sheet right here. The existing site has no curves and it's all gravel. Smith Associates performed the as-built survey, our existing condition survey for us. And what we found when we analyzed the, uh, the contour lines is that there's two, uh, we call them design points, uh, to the site. One of them, it was right here, which is the reservoir back here. So all the water from the pavement, from the, the dirt basically filters through the soil, but it ends up migrating and goes into a low point here. Goes into the, into the shrubbery that's between the reservoir and the property line and it just kind of meanders off. And the other design point, uh, is back here, uh, that goes into the Eversource easement, but it's still on our property. So what we've done, uh, to, uh, improve on the stormwater is, uh, once we put the pavement in here, we have raised the grade in this area and we have added a curb along the back. So the water that was going, surface water that was going towards the reservoir is no longer going there. What we are doing is we're collecting it. Uh, these are catch basins in this area here. And we have basically, uh, three systems. The first systems, which you can see by these, uh, dotted pipes here. This water from this drainage area and this drainage area here are going into the, uh, detention system that is on the end of Deer Park Drive. The water coming from this area here, all of this pavement here goes into an onsite infiltration system and it doesn't leave the site. Uh, these systems have, uh, what's called an isolator row to them. So as the water comes in, um, it flows through this isolator row first and any sediment that might be, uh, uh, buoyant in the stormwater is trapped in that road before it, it filters out and goes into the infiltration system. Um, the last drainage area is this area in the back. Uh, and we have two systems here. The, the building itself, uh, had, the roof water is considered clean by the DEP, doesn't touch soil, has no sediment. So we are taking that water, we're collecting it, and we have another infiltration system right back here, which you can see. Difference between these two is that this one doesn't have an isolator row. We don't need it. It's clean water off the roof. Everything from this high point here basically filters through a riprap, uh, setting pool in the back and then just meanders off into the back area, which is all grass. So, um, I wanted to show you the chart, uh, so I guess I'll read it to you. But it is in the drainage report on page thirteen. So, um, design point three thousand was our design point here. That was the flow going to the, uh, to the existing basin. So under the existing conditions, which was designed as Deer Park, we were allowed to, uh, I'll just pick the ten year storm. We were allowed six point eight seven cubic feet per second to go into that basin. Under this design, we have three point nine six. So we are underperforming as far as the water being sent to that basin. So we are allowed to do more and we've, uh, we've elected to do less. And we're doing that because stormwater acts in a funny way when you have different design storms. If we increase it so that we just meet that one, the higher storms then, uh, end up exceeding itself. So we, we tried to reduce them all so that we were below them on all of them. So design point one thousand is a design point, uh, I'm sorry, design point two thousand is a design point that was going into the, the reservoir. So again, under that ten year storm, we had four point three cubic feet per second water flowing across the parking area going out, out that low point. And for all storms, we have zero. We completely cut it off. All of that water is now being retained on site and is being treated. And our last design point is the design point here at the back, which is again staying on our property. We are, uh, existing have, uh, on the tenure storm, two point seven three cubic feet per second. And under proposed, we have two point oh five. So across the board, we've, uh, through the use of infiltration and disposing of water onsite, we have reduced the amount of water weaving, uh, the, the property, uh, improved its water quality through the, uh, capturing it and not having a free discharge anymore and, uh, infiltrating into the ground. The, uh, the last slide, slide that I have, this is a little jumpy, is our utilities. Backup one. Okay. When Deer Park was built, all of the utilities were stubbed to the property. So, uh, there is a drainage stub that comes out and it, they stop at the property line. Um, we don't have any asphalt information as to where that stub is located. So, uh, what we did on, on, for that, this particular item is that there's a manhole at the end of the cul-de-sac. We just went back to that manhole. So we have a small pavement cut, but we know what the invert elevation of the pipe is at that manhole. So we know that everything going back into our site works. Our sewer is at this area here, we have a sewer manhole. We connect onto that and the sewer runs into the building. You can just barely see it through here. Um, we also have, uh, a restroom facility in this, um, weigh shack or the, uh, scale house. So we have a sewer coming across going into this. And then once the water line connects to the stub, it runs into the, the main building. We have a service going back out. So we have water in this building, um, as well. Um, the, the last item I have, uh, is going to be extremely hard to read because it doesn't show up very well on, uh, the, the slide, is the, is the lighting plant. Uh, so each one of these black dots is a light. Um, you can just barely make them out, but these are the one foot candle lines. And we intentionally had all the lights around the perimeter facing in. We wanted to make sure that we didn't have any, any glare. Um, in, in the site plan, as you see that we have, uh, building mounted lights as well. Um, and those have a one foot, one foot candle line on them as well. Again, everything is contained within our, uh, property line. Uh, we don't have any light spillage. All these lights are proposed to be an LED type fixture, uh, very energy efficient. And, and as far as the, the, uh, the project, uh, itself is concerned, so, uh, Attorney Levine was right in summarizing that all the activities that are basically occurring, uh, uh, outside right now are going to occur inside. Uh, as far as the rail goes, uh, we have a rail consultant who has designed the interchange between where the spur is and going into the building. And he is working on, uh, uh, completing whatever that rail design is needed to, to actually, uh, continue the line. But it won't go any further than the crossing, uh, of where we are right now. There's no, no rails here at all. It's, uh, definitely will not go across that Deer Park drive. So what I'd like to do is unless there are any questions for me right now, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, to Michael Santos, who can go through the traffic and answer some questions on his presentation. Very good. Don't touch any buttons. Scroll. Uh, you can just use that, that button there or the mouse.
Thank you, John. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name's Michael Santos and I'm with the Nass hanging in Bruce Lynn and I'm a registered professional engineer with a focus in transportation planning and traffic engineering. I'm also, also joined by Molly Paz, who helped prepare the traffic study that I'm about to, uh, explain to you. So I just have a few slides. I don't think that this presentation should take too long. So we, we prepared a traffic and impact study to evaluate the transportation impacts. It's the traffic impacts of the project. Uh, and that was submitted to the planning board on February twenty first, two thousand twenty three. I'm not sure if they, if there, if you guys have, have a chance to review it yet. But this presentation summarizes the findings of that study. So just to orient you with, uh, with the project site in relation to the, uh, the, uh, surrounding roadway network. Uh, the site is located, um, at the end of Deer Park Drive, as John explained. This kind of shows up more of a zoomed out view. Uh, Deer Park Drive intersects with Shaker Road, which is the main street going north and south. South down into Enfield and north into the East Lawn Meadow Center. Uh, and then Denzlo Road connects to Shaker Road and runs east and west. So the project will expand the existing facility, uh, to process up to two thousand tons per day. So this, this will result in approximately sixty trucks over the course of one day. So we calculated how many, um, tons each truck can take and that they'll come out to about sixty trucks. Uh, the trucks will arrive and depart over a nine hour period. Uh, so this is not going to be a twenty four hour facility, but you're not going to have truck activity around the clock. Uh, the, the anticipated hours of operation are six AM to three PM. That might change by, by an hour or so. Uh, there's not going to be any changes to the existing driveway or parking. Uh, additional employee trips will be minimal. There will be some, a couple of additional staff, but it's not going to really have much of an impact on the traffic. And again, as I said before, uh, we did, we do have a more detailed traffic impact and access study, uh, with a lot more technical information, that was submitted to the planning board. So just to, uh, describe the study area, so that these, uh, these circles represent intersections which we, um, analyzed in the traffic study. So we looked at four intersections. Uh, the first one, Shaker Road at Deer Park Drive. Uh, Shaker Road at Pease Road, Shaker Road at Denzlo Road, and then, uh, Denzlo Road at Benton Drive. So these are, these are the, uh, intersections that will be impacted the most, uh, by the, by the traffic that's going to be generated by the project. Uh, we went out to traffic counts in, I believe it was February or March of this year. Um, during the morning and evening periods, so that's seven to nine AM and four to six PM, um, on a weekday. Uh, those represent the, the peak hours of activity that you can see throughout the course of the day. Um, even though the, uh, the, the peak of the project is, you know, the project, the, the operating hours probably are not going to extend, um, you know, too much past four o'clock, um, the four to six PM is still going to be the higher, higher, uh, traffic volumes. Uh, so what we found is on Shaker Road, there's about around eleven thousand vehicles per day. So that's on two directions. You'll see, if you stand out there for twenty four hours, you'll see around eleven thousand, uh, cars and trucks pass by. Eight hundred thirty vehicles per hour in the morning and then in the evening, it's around eleven hundred vehicles per hour. So, uh, the next step, um, in the, in the traffic study is to estimate the traffic generation, um, to be expected from this project. And what we do is we, we take the existing traffic accounts, um, what we project them out to the future. Typically we use a seven year, uh, time horizon that's consistent with, uh, you know, with state and, uh, industry standards. We apply a general background, uh, growth, uh, traffic growth rate. So we apply a one percent annual growth rate, um, to the existing traffic counts to sort of build out the future traffic volumes. We're basically anticipating traffic willing to grow. Um, that's, that growth rate's based on historical data from what we've seen, um, throughout the past, like, ten years or so around the region. Uh, we also looked at other projects that are proposed in East Lawn Meadow and in any area. And, um, and one of those projects that we, we did incorporate, we know that there's a warehouse project on Chestnut Street, which we also included in this traffic analysis. I just want to point out that's a, you know, that's a little bit outside of these intersections here, but that is accounted for in the traffic analysis. So if we take our, our sixty truck trips per day, so that's about sixty truckloads, we'll, we'll handle the processing of all material throughout the course of the day. Those trips will be, will be spread out throughout the day pretty, pretty evenly. It's not like there's going to be a huge morning rush or, or, or an evening rush. I mean, they can, traffic can fluctuate, um, a decent amount. It's only sixty trips per day. So you might see some peaks here and there, um, throughout the day. But in general, uh, in the morning, we'll see around seven truck trips. And then again, in the evening, about seven trips. Um, just to put that into perspective from the previous slide, that's, you know, we've seen eight hundred and eighty to eleven hundred vehicles on Shaker Road, during those peak hours. So it's a very small percentage. Um, it's about one every ten minutes or so. Um, and again, uh, we developed a trip distribution. So that's, uh, where the trucks are coming in from and, and exiting to. Um, we did speak with the existing site operator, um, so they know, they have a sense of where their trucks are traveling to and from. And generally what we see here is that there's ten percent oriented to the south, uh, down through Enfield, another ten percent down Pease Road. Um, I know that's not a very desirable route, but that will account for a few trips. Um, we don't have any going to the north on Shaker Road. They said that their, their truck drivers generally avoid, um, the rotary in the center of town. That's not to say that they can't do that, just they, they generally do not travel that way. And then the majority of it's, uh, oriented to the west to get out to, uh, Interstate ninety one, the regional highway system. So again, these percentages, they're not, you know, they're not exact. They might vary on a day to day basis. But in, in general, this is, um, how the existing traffic patterns are going. And this is, this is what we use to assign the, the future project trips. So the, the, the site in total, and again, the site in total will generate sixty truck, truck trips per day. So that's, that's inclusive of what's already happening on the site. Fortunately, we don't have, we didn't get traffic counts out of the site driveway. So that will, um, you know, that, that's inclusive of what's happening in site right now. The next step of the study was to actually look at the traffic operations at those four intersections. What we do there, again, we did some traffic counts, um, in, I think it was February or March of this year. We projected them into the future by adding the one percent growth rate. We added traffic from the three thirty Chestnut Street warehouse project. And then we, on top of that, we added our, our small amount of truck, truck, truck traffic, um, from the project. And what we did is we, we have these traffic analysis tools that can measure fuel lines, um, capacity at the intersections, vehicular delays, um, and that's all based on the traffic volumes and the, and the geometry out there and the, and the traffic control. All, all of these intersections are, um, stop control. So and what, and what we found from the operations analysis is that the, the seven truck trips per hour is going to have a very minimal impact on traffic operations. Really what we wanted, what we want to know is, do we need to make any improvements? Are there any capacity issues, um, that these intersections have where the, that they cannot handle the additional traffic from this project? But the, the additional seven tr- truck trips per hour, and again, that, that can fluctuate and might be a little bit higher, a little bit lower. Um, what we found is that there is plenty of capacity to handle the amount of traffic that this project is generating. So there's no, no real need for any major capacity enhancements or additional lanes or, or anything else that's, uh, throughout the study area. Again, just to summarize, uh, this is expansion of an, of an existing, uh, transfer facility on Deer Park Drive. Again, just to summarize, this is expansion of an of an existing transfer facility on Deer Park Drive. It's going to handle approximately 2,000 tons per day, which is is about 60 truckloads. On-site parking and driveways will not be, no, no major modifications will happen to them. Again, truck activity will be limited to nine hours. You're not going to have truck activity throughout the night, generally during working hours. The employee trips will be will be very limited and the project is not going to have any major material impact on traffic operations. Again, it's it will add add some truck traffic to the immediate neighborhood. But the 60 truck trips per day, if you go out there and you go out there, you might see a few extra trips. Traffic out there right now, it's going to be noticeable. Again, there's there will be 60 additional truck trips. So I think that is that's it for my presentation. Do we have anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just have a quick question off the bat. So 60 trucks is the estimate. So what what would be the non-trucks or the employees? Is there an estimate on the number of like everyday vehicles of the employees or the number of employees that will actually be rough? It's three shifts of seven employees. Okay. I did appreciate the factoring in of that proposed site Chestnut. I think it gives us a little better sense of just what the whole industrial area could be looking like. Let me bring it to the rest of the board. I know I think some of you had some questions.
Okay.
Do you want to go first?
All right. So for the people in the audience, I'm going to last, I'm going to ask a lot of questions and some of them you're not going to like, but I'm going to ask them anyway. So I go to your study. Okay. So it's the proposed wastewater waste facility expansion. On page one, under introduction, project description and background. Existing operation generates between five and six heavy vehicle trips per day. And then the next paragraph says the facility is anticipating that 60 trucks will be needed to haul the waste. Is it five and 60? Is it five and 60 that are already operating and then 60 more? And whatever you tell me, it's going to have to be fixed in here because this gets put into the record and we're going to want the record to be clean.
That's a second question.
So, yeah, so that's a that's a good comment and I apologize for the discrepancy. In the report, the five to 60 truck trips per day is what we counted at the end of Deer Park Drive. So that is the existing number of truck trips. Not just for the site, but for all of the other sites that Deer Park Drive serves. So we can, we can clarify that in the report if, you know, if we have a chance to update that. So it's going to be on top of all, most of it will be on top of that.
So you're doubling the truck traffic?
Essentially, we could.
Yes or no?
On on some days it might, yeah.
Is it yes or no?
Is it yes or no?
Is it you're going to be doubling the truck traffic? I just want it for the record.
Well, on the days where there are 60 truck trips on Deer Park Drive and we're adding 60 trucks, we would be doubling the truck traffic. On the days where there are five, I guess we would be doubling the truck traffic.
On page five, under roadways, Deer Park Drive. The primary land uses along Deer Park Drive are industrial by nature. So if I drive in Deer Park, I see a office building. I see a fence company. I see a childcare facility. Industrial by nature?
Well, it's it's more of a mixed use, mixed land use.
You're going to fix this? Give an accurate description of what it is rather than actual uses? You put back up your the slide that showed the different intersections. And so it's my understanding VHB also consulted on consulted for the town on 330 Chestnut Street. That's correct. You verified that. And do you remember that slide where 330 Chestnut Street said that 40% of the truck traffic was going to go down Chestnut Street? And the remaining 60%, they anticipated 20% into the rotary, 20% up Chestnut Street and 20% down Shaker Road. That 20% of the 400 estimated trucks a day from that site is 80 additional trucks interacting with the trucks from this site. And what impact would that have on the intersections, including the one that you didn't mention, which was Chestnut and Shaker?
Well, we didn't look at Chestnut and Shaker, so I can't, I can't comment on that and I can only comment on this study. I know that VHB did do the peer review of the of the Chestnut Street facility.
Which which is why I'm asking that question, why you didn't include it in this at the same time.
I was not part of that peer review, so unfortunately I can't really comment on what was done in that study.
But based upon that fact, you would expect that you should probably study that intersection as well. Not only for the safety of the trucks coming out of Chestnut, but the residents and and your trucks interacting with tractor trailers coming out of that site. And then would it make a difference if you were to hear that the planning board is considering that there only be right out of the 330 Chestnut Street? So you couldn't take a left and go back down Chestnut Street after the trucks have come in, drop their load there at the warehouse and then would be restricted to right-hand traffic? And so they'd have to go down Chestnut or go up Chestnut, Shaker into the rotary, which I I know the town council is going to restrict that. So that would push more truck traffic on Shaker Road. Would that impact your analysis?
So as I, as I said, in the study, we did include all of the traffic projections from that study in here. If if we are required to look at other intersections and if there are any other, you know, changes to traffic patterns that haven't been proposed as part of that, that's something that we would that we would look at, yeah. And and again, if 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 the planning board wants us to look at another intersection and, you know, that's something that we're required to do, we'll absolutely incorporate any any changes in traffic patterns resulting from that that project into our projections.
So any questions I have are not indicative, just so people know of how I'm going to vote on this. I just want to make sure that we have the most accurate information on the record so that when we make a decision, we can back it up with how we're voting. So.
I just wanted to address your questions. They're all very good ones. One of the reasons for the study not going farther north. This is a situation where, one, a lot of the drivers who will be leaving this facility are employees of the Arment, Charlemagne Trucking and will be instructed, or already instructed, not to go through the rotary. And also you've seen your packet, there's a pamphlet that the operators will be giving to customers stating where they should drive. I know that that will not stop everyone. But these are not drivers who are taking 18-wheelers across the country. These are going to be local drivers from sites who are more familiar with the area. And it would, if they know the area, they will turn at Denzilow. They're not going to turn and continue north towards Chestnut, knowing that there may be more traffic and certainly not towards the rotary. So that's my understanding of questions and we will include whatever information you need. But that's the reason why the scope was limited to this because I wanted to be the most realistic as to what the actual traffic pattern would be.
So kind of quickly, just on that point, I noticed that it was 0% going north of Shaker. So it's generally then it seems like the consensus that the trucks won't be going at all in that direction and instead they'll be moving more towards the west into Long Meadow or down to down to Enfield, basically?
Yeah, that's correct.
If you're coming from this way, given with the GPS, the GPS is not going to want to route you through the center. This is a much more direct route to the highways. That's where it's anticipated most of the traffic.
And so I'm saying, just as a clarification too, so this, the the product or the recycling materials that will be coming to this site are coming from trucks, but are they also coming from people that aren't in trucks? Like, you know, regular individuals can use this as a service. I just want to make make it clear. So it's it's trucks that are coming in to bring in materials and then take out materials?
There could be other customers that anticipate that that would be most of the, even a small minority of the business.
So if that's the case, you should be renaming it commercial and residential recycling rather than just commercial recycling. Does that then generate additional traffic? I don't know. I'm asking you.
To be frank, it may, that's really not anticipated. It wouldn't be obscure and the owners want to see this, but it would, it's not anticipated as being what the kind of people that would be using this facility.
If I may, which ones will, which ones Charlie? Okay, Charlie. Hi, I will. How you doing? I wanted to first of all, say that you are very considerate truck drivers. I live on Pease Road, as you know. Take your brakes a little out, but your guys drive really well. I want to compliment you on that, okay? My only fear here is I live at the bottom of Pease, Pease Road. It's a little tiny crummy road. My house is 300 years old and as it is now, when you guys go by, the stuff that I have on my table shakes. We have to reorganize it all. I think it's a really good project, to be honest with you. I think it's very well thought out. You put a lot of money into it. Railroad sightings aren't cheap. It's 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 the right place. But I'd like to see a traffic study done that incorporates both your project and the 330 Chestnut Street project and the total impact of that, plus any other residential people that may be going in and out. Now, are you guys going to be trucking a lot of it yourself?
We would truck the biggest percentage of it myself.
Now, do you anticipate Pease Road being used a lot? I mean, I I know you guys have projects that go up and down as needed. That's great, but.
The guys will typically take a direct route, but Pease Road is a very undesirable road.
Oh, you got that right.
It's a very undesirable road to drive on with a truck, as you know, you live.
And I use the truck.
And never mind the incline. You'd have to climb Pease and go back down Pease. Our guys are going to stay on Main Art as much as they can. And we will collect material from all the surrounding towns and cities, our trucks. Currently, we travel Benton, 91 or Duway, which is a more direct path, less traffic, less pedestrian traffic, much safer route for our guys. So this is like, like Mr. Levine said, our drivers are all local guys. They're not over the road guys. They live in the general area. They know the, they're not going to, they don't want to deal with the traffic, the pedestrians, the center, the hills. All that stuff is turned up.
You see, I we get, we get these grain trucks coming down, ten-wheelers, all sorts of people like that. And in the winter time, you know what the hills like. It's a big thing of ice, a big patch of ice. I can't understand how any you know, private owner or anybody would even consider going up and down that stinking road in a big truck like that.
Probably the problem is GPS. GPS.
Yeah, I know.
If we're delivering, if we're on Pease Road, we're making a delivery in that area.
I'm sorry, what was that?
If we're on Pease Road, for instance, we're making a delivery in that area.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. I understand that. Yes. We're just fearful that if it's open at 6:00 and you get somebody that's not an Arment driver that's out of town and hits the GPS that says, oh, geez, Pease Road, I'm coming up 83, I want to get over to Shaker Road, so I'm going to hit Pease Road. And it'd be a nightmare for us, you know, really trying to survive at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. I understand it's not, it's not a real lot of traffic. I didn't know there was that many vehicles on Shaker Road per day. So if you take 60 trucks, you know, going here and there, it's not all that bad, but I really want to see a total traffic study done so that it's represented properly to the town. But kudos to you guys in your operation existing, okay?
As you heard from Mr. Santos, the anticipated truck traffic to the extent that it's attributable is included in this study. And I I've spent the last few days rewatching your hearings and I don't know if we would, if there's enough sound data to go in. So to be fair, the VHB knows the traffic amounts from Chestnut. It's included here and I I don't know with, knowing what you know, if if we can go beyond what we've done. I might give you a little speak.
So this is this is taking into consideration about another 600 truckloads a day from the 330 Chestnut?
So what what we did is we included, we did look at the traffic study for the 330 Chestnut Street project. We looked at the traffic projections, their traffic networks. And what we did is we took that project traffic and we it we superimposed it onto our traffic network. So all of all of the traffic that is going to come from that project that not not all of it, but the traffic from that project that will go through these intersections are included in our study. So that that's what I was getting.
That's where you're getting the 11,000.
No, the 11,000, the 11,000 was from counts. That's what's happening today. Yeah, the 11,000 is happening today. But but our traffic study in these intersections do do incorporate the traffic from the 330 Chestnut Street project that is expected to go through these intersections. So it's obviously it's not all of their traffic. But it's just a portion of the traffic that is going to go going to go up and down Shaker Road, Denzilow Road, so that we did include all of that.
Quickly, I was just going to say, I think that wouldn't be a bad point maybe to consider that the only thing, I mean, at this point, it could be potentially, depending on how the vote is on that other project, could be moved depending on how that goes, just as a thought.
So the other reason we're asking you so much about the traffic is you had mentioned the level of service on the intersections. So I doubt the answer is yes, but we should just put it out there. Does the amount of traffic generated from this proposal change the level of service designation for any of the impacted intersections?
No, I don't believe it does. I'd have to go back into the traffic study, but the the traffic volumes from this are so minor that it shouldn't change the the actual level of service designation. And just for folks in the crowd that don't know what level of services is, what we do is we, during the traffic analysis, we measure the amount of delay that a vehicle experiences. So for example, if you pull up to a stop sign and if you're, if you're coming down Pease Road and you pulled to a stop sign and you have to wait 30 seconds, 45 seconds, 60 seconds, that that's the measure of delay. And what we do is we measure the average delay. So over the course of the peak hour, let's just say, you know, if there's 100 vehicles on Pease Road, I'm not saying that's what it is. And we would average out how how much time they spend waiting. So that's the average delay and then we assign a letter category. So it's from A to F, the level of service is from A to F. F means that it's a higher delay. A means that it's a little delay. Just one thing to note, in the traffic study, you'll see there will be some level of service F. That doesn't mean it's failing. That just means that the delay is over 50 seconds on average. Doesn't mean that there's not enough capacity. It's just very typical when you have a a main road like Shaker Road near your side street trying to exit onto it. It's typically, especially during the peak hours, you can experience delay, you know, that exceeds 50 seconds. So, but this project won't change the the level of service at any of the locations.
And the last question I have on the traffic study, I promise this. And we do have to kind of weave in 330 Chestnut Street. So there's been a lot of discussion about the deterioration of the roads with the amount of truck traffic. I probably know the answer. With 60 vehicles, you don't see a a major deterioration of the roads based upon additional 60 truck, you know, trips a day.
Are you asking about how the how this?
The pavement, yeah, how it'll affect the pavement over a period of time?
I think the the 60 trucks will probably not have much of an impact compared to the general traffic. I mean, that's not something we looked at in the traffic study, but the 60 trucks shouldn't have much of an impact compared to, you know, the daily, the 11,000 daily traffic volumes you're going to see. So.
So one thing to add on that, these are also, these are smaller trucks. These are 60 trucks. These are 60 trailer trailers.
Yeah. Would you be able to just kind of describe the type of truck, the average truck that would be used? Or I'm not sure. The owner might be better at.
Let me ask the other.
What we call a roll off is either a 10 wheeler or a tri axle. Kind of like you see a dumpster in someone, out of a construction project, what they call a 30 yard container. Trucks carrying those are going to be the bulk of our traffic. There will be tractor trailers, but not anywhere near, you know, a dozen a day. On a good day would be a big load, a big, a big volume for us, I think.
So mostly just those 10 wheelers.
Correct.
And they just drink thing out of the cave. The one concern I have is, is that the 330 Chestnut Street project, which has nothing to do with you guys. I understand that, but it has a lot to do with the town and the value of our town. That traffic study already brought the intersections to an F. So additional traffic, which I know it's not a ton, 60 more trucks, but there's already a problem. So it's just, you know, you've got to kind of take the two and blend them together and try to decide what's good for the town, if you understand what I'm saying. You know, you already, they already admitted to an F with full service with a full hundred, 100 docks, meaning he was four or five times a day. So that, you know, it's a little bit of a problem. I just don't want to see the town get, you know, deteriorate because of truck traffic. This actually seems to be a little bit less than what I thought it was going to be. But I'm just very concerned about it, particularly Pease and Chestnut, which are both in the winter time awful. I used to drive an oil truck and I stuck my right front wheel. And I came down a tighter equipment where I kept my trucks, put it in the snowbank to make sure I stopped when I got down the bottom of the Shaker Road. It's, it's pretty treacherous. Those are my comments.
I, I could just address that when we first brought this before the board, the number was, we were anticipating 100. And one of the 100 trucks a day, 100 trips. And the, the, the train offloading is one of the ways that that was reduced.
That's a good idea. Really good.
The 60 is also based on the capacity. That's what the applicants feel comfortable with. And so I understand what you're, what you're saying, of course. Everything's been done on this project to minimize the impact to the extent that's possible.
Just a quick question on while you bring up the rest. So there's no rail activity in the town as of right now. This would be new, some new rail activity. Are there existing tracks on the property or have they been? I know, I know it's like cleared out, there's a clearing there, but is there existing track?
I, I can't speak to this with any knowledge. John, we have a different answer. My understanding is that the track is being brought up to the infield line by another project. The tracks will be brought, the Arment's will be adding on there for some of the small pieces.
Okay. And then just one other quick kind of clarifying, not related to the traffic. Is there a, a plan? Maybe I may have missed this. I, I know, I mean, this is an industrial area, so there's not houses or residents, you know, like right on top of it. You know, but obviously because there's going to be industrial use, proposes this property. Is there a fence or any type of, you know, kind of sort of protecting the area? Or maybe the intention of making one to kind of just protect the facility? If you just want to speak out.
I know that's covered by the bylaw. Hi, John Furman again. There, there is a fence. By law requires that for other property be shielded by a fence so that you, you really can't see the activities inside. So we have a fence across the, the front. And for security purposes, there's an existing fence that runs all around the property, which we are retaining or we are relocating and putting back up. So the property is 100% fenced, but the one in front is an actual screen. You can't see through it.
And the trees are going to be planted and all that stuff.
Yeah, I just noticed on the plan, the site plan should have had five or six trees in there. And they must have been put on a layer that didn't plot. But we do have trees planted in that green buffer area.
I think we need to see that on a definitive plan.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, when we're, when we're all not here anymore, somebody's going to look and go, what, you know, what's this plan about? So it needs to show the trees.
Yeah. And part of, part of the other reason why I sort of asked that is also, obviously it's pretty distant so far. But there is, you know, been discussion about extending the rail trail, which is right kind of ends at Denfloh there, but has been discussed as potentially moving further south. So maybe that may bring in some pedestrian use, but just as a kind of a safety, general safety question. Did anybody else from the board have any questions before we?
Not on traffic.
I have other questions, but not on traffic.
Okay. Do you want to ask now?
Okay.
So this is not a traffic question. Hi, John. I'm wondering if you would answer a couple of questions about West Mass area development.
Sure.
So are you still on the board there?
I am.
Okay. Is Jeff Daly still the president?
Yes, he is.
Okay. So when you sold the property to the Arment's, was this project being considered at the time?
I would have to defer to them to tell you the truth. So I don't exactly remember all the details.
And were there any restrictions on the use of the property put in by West Mass on the, on the parcels in the park?
There may be some. I don't remember either. You, you probably know better than I do, right? Hi, John Furman again. There were restrictions when we did the original design back in 2005. They only lasted for a certain period of time. And there actually are documents recorded which is where those restrictions are.
So you did the work before.
For West Mass back in 2005. I was engineer of record on that project as well.
Okay.
All right.
So, so those restrictions had a, had a timeline on, on them? Okay.
And there was some, if I remember correctly, I represented during the purchase, a number of restrictions were waived on the purchase until 2018.
I remember that. Okay. That answers that question.
That answers that question. Oh, yeah. Can, can we get your name from the, and last name, address for the record?
John Mayberry, A Y, B R Y.
Thank you. All right. So any other non-traffic related questions, comments before we open up to them publicly?
The drainage, the drainage is better than what things. These, these type of structures are excellent.
I'll just have one more comment.
I just really want to compliment you guys on the, on the railroad spur. That is a fabulous idea, very creative, reduces the amount of traffic, just really, really well done.
Bringing back to life, something that used to be in this town. So with, with that, I at this point would like to open up the public hearing portion of this. So is there anybody on Zoom or in the audience here that would like to speak on this item? Just have to come up to the mic. Can you come up to the mic? Can you state your name and?
Yes, I'm Angela Ross. I live at 16 Crescent Beach Drive in Anfield, Connecticut. I did send you an email. I don't know if you got a chance to read my email. Tried to send it to all of you, but I wasn't sure. So I'm going to read parts of it tonight. To your town of East Slant Meadow, mayor, town manager, board members, planners, wetlands commissioners and P O C D members. I am the clerk of the Crescent Lake Tax District, which is in Anfield, Connecticut, just to hold this project. The information that you shared with the town of Anfield on March 28th, 2023, was shared with me thanks to Lori Whitten upon receipt so I could disseminate the information to our residents. The Crescent Lake Tax District has not been informed of this project prior to this date. And we have been left in the dark, although we are rebutters in every sense of the law, as this project has a direct impact on the watershed leading to our lake. The project breaks laws of the Wetlands Protection Act, Wetlands Regulations and Wetland Statutes. See 310 C M R 10 dot 00 Wetlands Protection Act Regulations, which became effective October 24th, 2014. This act pertains to both inland and coastal areas. And 310 C M T 10 dash 21 through 10 dash 60 provides standards for work within these areas. 310 C M R 10 dash 51 to 10 60 pertains to inland areas of wetlands, which include Jaw Brook, Brook Reservoir, Shaker Pines Lake and Crescent Lake, which are all impacted by this work. We certainly request a cease and desist of all activity involved in this project areas for the reasons listed here among, along with a multitude and many more listed in those statutes. Removals of acres of trees, altering the area, removal of plants up to and including the water's edge, activities within the buffer zone, which is 100 feet of an area specified in 310 C M R, adverse impacts to the resource area, adverse impact to the area itself, extent of the work, proximity to the resource area, conversion of impervious and vegetated surfaces with no erosion or sedimentation controls in place, not leaving bordering vegetated wetland and clearing at substantial grading within the buffer zone, wetlands protection which impacts our lake. Please refer to the general provisions for the protections of the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, which is linked on your website. You must all be very familiar with all of it and entails. And I have a lot of information that I cut and paste from that. In addition, regarding the immense treatment rule, it appears to be that the Mass Department of Environmental Protections has been ignored. Is this simply because this does not actually impact the town of East Slant Meadow, but instead your neighbors? Shame on you if that's the fact. My hope is that you have, my hope is that you have not watched the area and are just unaware. If this is the fact, then please deny this application and send our inspect, out inspectors to force this developer, developer to remediate their destruction, which will cause imminent destruction to our lakes in the town of Anfield. And to add insult to injury, the developer stated that all trucks will be given instruction to turn right on the end of Deer Park Run on the application and travel through the town of Anfield instead of through East Slant Meadow. Obviously he realizes that this truck traffic would be an issue with the residents of East Slant Meadow. And of course, it is also an issue for the residents of Crescent Lake, which is right over the border in Anfield and they have a bunch of other kids cutting the trees. Number three, the first core theme listed in your town plan of conservation and development on page 10 is protecting the natural development. And you have 12 recommendations toward that goal. A4 speaks volumes against the work being done at this site. And the primary care persons for this are the planning board and the conservations commission. This statement is taken directly from your website. Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission is responsible for the administration of environmental laws and policies, open space protection and management, water management, preservation of natural features of the environment and coordination for joint action with many town bodies. Wetlands, guidelines about adverse, adverse impact to the wetlands. And I have a picture here that shows the rivers that flows directly into Jaw Brook Reservoir and the rivers that go right underneath Deer Park, Deer Park Road, which I did take a peek at today and noticed that it's filling in our reservoir. Our area to our Crescent Lake pictured here is filling in. On the G I S map, it looks nice and clear. But if you look carefully and you take a drive there, you realize on the right side that vegetation is all filling in there. Also, simple alternatives still exist. Alternatives can be to truck the materials away as it is already being done. No need for this project destruction of the environment. And then the lengthy guidelines continue to, as you complete the document. And according to the regulations, the redevelopment section below that you can see should be required of this contractor to redevelop the area. There's a picture there, have a photo of the same area years ago where it was all trees. And now the picture that you saw where they've totally destroyed pretty much all of the trees. All that yellow is full of trees. Please be a responsible neighbor and have this developer repair the damages and do not pass this transportation idea. And I'm not sure if you read that portion because I didn't even hear it mentioned tonight. But there's a, there's a plan to transport all of this truck waste that they're talking about through the town of Anfield on our rail line. And I have a picture for you of the fact that the place that they want to put this through is a neighborhood, our neighborhood, with the rail going right alongside. And all of the ground is contaminated. And we are, I have all the data here about how it was contaminated. I've contacted the D E P on that. So I didn't know if you read that portion, but it was in the, I'm sure you have. You sound, you sound like you're really amazing. Page three, site plan application says that they're going to sort the final destination and load it on train cars. Finally, the train cars will exit the center over the Connecticut border and through Anfield. So I'm sure you are aware of that. Just wanted, hope that you will be good neighbors to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? If you can just come up to the front portion here, just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Hall. I am the state rep for this area of Anfield that borders this project and East Windsor as well. I'm here tonight just really to get a, a better understanding of the project. We certainly appreciate you allowing us to speak at your hearing. It means a lot as a non-resident to be here and be able to speak to you. So I certainly appreciate you allowing it. It's, it's, it's a privilege. So first I want to start, and we were, we're listening really hard to the rail piece of this. And I'm not going to weigh in on this project. Obviously it has nothing to do with the state of Connecticut. I'm here to simply explain to you where we are with our freight line on the other side of the state border here. So for the last bunch of years, the gentleman that had the lease on the freight line that continues through to your beautiful Rails to Trail project, his lease ran up about a year ago. All the state representatives from Anfield and East Windsor bipartisan. There's two Republicans and two Democrats are working collectively to take that freight line that now ends in East Windsor and continue it through to the state of Massachusetts and hopefully connect with your Rails to Trail, which I will tell you, many of our residents take advantage of your beautiful Rails to Trail. So we wanted to duplicate that in a two-state effort to kind of expand what you have started up here, which is a wonderful project. The gentleman that has the lease right now, the lease expires in August. The state of Connecticut, the D O T knows nothing about this project. And it may be a moot point. It may be totally a different rail that you're looking to utilize. But the freight line that comes up through Connecticut and connects right where your, your line, your rail to trail ends, we're looking to connect. So it may be a totally different piece of this line you're referencing. That's why we're here tonight. But we wanted to make it very clear that that line on the other side of Connecticut, which is a defunct freight line, is not going to be reopened. So I just, I'm here to kind of communicate that. And, and I guess if, if it was the plan of the developer to utilize that line in the future, I would think you want to know how many trucks that's going to impact if they're not using a freight line. So I'm here just to share that information with you. I'll also share a letter. I have a copy from the two state senators from Anfield and East Windsor, myself, along with the state rep, my counterpart on the other side of East Windsor, of the support of the Rails to Trail. So it's going to be a huge push on our side. So it's gonna be a huge push on our side of the border. We actually look forward to hopefully connecting to yours and make it a by-state effort. So I'm here just to tell you that, and here to support my residents that have some concerns with the impact on the wetlands. Again, I wanna thank you for allowing us to speak here. It's, it's really kind of not typically done, and I understand that, but I know you understand how close that is to our border, so I appreciate it, and I'm gonna share the letters with you so you can share with the rest of the board, but thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think it would be good, just before we go any further, I, I'm not sure if, if you have any comments, or somebody from the team has any comments regarding the Windsor most recent testimony?
Yeah. This is one from.
I'm sure this is new information or known information, or.
Charlie has any more knowledge on this, but this is, I have not been privy to the rail discussion, that's what they can say, it's not my type of law, unfortunately.
Fair enough. Does anybody else wanna comment on it before we just keep going, or?
I'll comment if you don't mind.
My nephew put this project together. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, that was him who just called me. He met with the Connecticut Transportation Director, who's in charge of the rail. Rail's coming to Enfield. When it comes to Enfield, it's coming to the Mass Line. So this, we're, we're not doing this, coming in here to give you a bullshit line, basically.
Yeah, that's fair.
We've worked on this for over a year, just on the rail.
You know, and that's fair, I think it, it may be wise just to make sure we reconcile that, you know, somebody from the state government, you know, that's saying.
Rail, I, I can tell you, and again, I don't, I don't know her, rail's coming back in this country, and that'd be the bearer of bad news, if they really wanted to, they'd go right through East Long Meadow, you know, they can't, it's, it's, it's a known fact, if you know anything about the railroad, it's a railroad forever that was set up by the government well before the anniversary here, and it's not our intent, we're not going any further, we don't need to. And I know it would be a fight for anyone, but it's coming to Enfield, and like I said, this is a year and a decade that we've spent on just that alone.
Yeah, that, that's fair, I just.
Get a letter from them?
Thank you. Yeah, I think what would be good, maybe to add to the record of this, do you wanna get, what were you?
I'm just saying, if we get a letter from, it'd be great to have, stating that it's gonna come through, but it's a pivot, it's a pivot point here in the.
Absolutely, I understand that, I mean, I think if, if the rail wasn't there, we'd be in front of you and honestly telling that we'd be transported out by, by truck. So I can do my best to get that letter, and we'll get it, we'll get it to you.
Okay, we don't wanna rely on any political, on any politically charged type of thing, is what I'm saying, yeah.
I understand, I know.
Thanks.
I can just speak on that for a little while, thanks, Chris. It's my understanding that even in East Long Meadow, all of the agreements, all of the trails, those are easements, that's a right for the use, but they can be revoked, and it, it's beyond any local permitting, it may even be, this would be federally regulated because it is a line, so that is why, as I said, it's above my pay grade, that's my understanding, and I do know that it's all easements going through any town, because the railroads don't give up the right.
Yeah, I think that letter would be helpful. I will say, I, I don't think this is really going to be a factor in the decision that I make, but I do really like our rail trail, and potentially the idea of it going into another community like Enfield, so that might, this might complicate that, but that also doesn't, you know, kind of completely factor into this exact project. Okay, so I know there was another hand raised, if, if you can come to just state your name and identify yourself. Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could address the previous comments about the environmental?
Sure.
I guess it might be easier just to take them as they come.
Yes.
So we have an environmental consultant on, on the project who evaluated the parcel land, the, the classification of the reservoir, we don't have any impact on that, we're actually improving it because we are stopping the surface water that's currently flowing into it, and we're bringing it back in and retreating it. We do have a wetland on our site, which is located to the south, but it's located at the south side of the hundred and fifty-foot ever-source easement, so that one hundred foot buffer doesn't reach us. So contrary to what was said, we are not in violation of any wetlands protection law, and we are not cutting down any trees. The, you can go on Google Earth, and you can look at the historic photos, there may have been trees on this site, I, I know we're not cutting one down on this one right now, so.
And just as a clarifying, I know this is, some of this, we obviously talk about here, but for folks that are maybe not from the community, I know that we do have a conservation commission, so I don't wanna maybe lead on Bailey here, or maybe, or maybe you can state to, did this go in front of conservation? I'm assuming it did.
It didn't have to. No, it was not necessary, there was a letter from the Wetlands Consultancy, it was not necessary on this project.
Okay.
Given the buffer zones.
That's been treeless for a long time. I used to ride my quad down there all the time, there's been trees there for twenty years, fifteen years.
I'll be honest with you, I know I'm, I'm older in age than when we built Deer Park, but I don't even remember trees back in two thousand and five on that site. We, we had that all torn up when we built the roadway, I don't recall that being a tree parcel.
The trees are way back, and there's another field back there.
There is, I think on the other side of the rail, we did remove a lot of trees because we constructed a very large detention basin for the roadway. I do know, but that has nothing to do with this, and that was, that was twenty years ago.
So I don't think we got a copy of that letter from D E P, if we could just, for the record, that you stated that it didn't require conservation approval?
It's not from D E P, but I'll, I'll send you the letter.
Was it from?
From Pete Lebec, the Wetlands Consultant.
Okay.
It was shared with, I believe it was shared with P P W.
But he has to work with the D E P anyway, and it's regulations are regulations, so.
Yeah, so.
A letter would be great, and a letter stating that the rail's gonna come through would be necessary also.
Yeah, so our, our department did reach out to D E P, it's not clear, but I think our D A would be helpful to determine whether or not further approval from the commission is required, just to get a delineation of the wetlands, I think that would be helpful in this case.
Okay, so if you, if you think gaps, and just come and identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. Again, thank, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Michael Lutwick, I'm a current councilman in Enfield, and I am only speaking for myself. Just again, I understand it's, there's kinds of moving parts here, but I look at some of the presentation, whether it's a rail or trucks, we sort of get squeezed either way, I understand, it's not your problem, but again, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I know it's not, maybe you don't have to allow us, but as a neighbor, we appreciate it. I'll give you a little more background on some of the rails, I'm not gonna dispute the gentleman's, you know, trying to pick a fight, but we were actually working with your town when I was the mayor a few years ago, to actually, to, as our state rep said, to actually extend, hopefully open our rail to a trail and connect it to your, you know, beautiful trail that you have, which again, a lot of our residents use. I, I think from some perspective on the rail, it's been a lease for over thirty years, nothing has been done on that freight line, you know, if, you know, and I understand you had your own, you know, issues, or how long you've not had the, had the trail here, if you've actually walked it down to the East Windsor border, which we have, it's gonna cost millions of dollars to open up that line, even if they don't wanna spend that kind of money, there's bridges there that, again, we've asked, actually, we've had public meetings on this in Enfield, so it's all public information, we've asked our D O T, who's gonna spend, if you know, the bridge that goes over the Scannick River in Enfield, I'm not sure a hundred ton, that bridge can handle a hundred ton, you know, train, and then if you actually go down into East Windsor, it's actually even worse, there's some bridge, old bridges that are, basically, we try to walk across, I'll be upfront, I was nervous to stand on those, you know, trestles as you walked across, so I'm just saying, not saying, you know, the rail's coming, maybe it's twenty years down the road, I can tell you, there's a lot of us in town, again, I only speak for myself, so I want to be clear, I don't speak for the rest of the council or the town of Enfield, but a lot of us wanna see a, a trail. You know, we have, we have a separate passenger line that goes through the other part of our town, so we already have, you know, usable, usable passenger, passenger line there, but specifically this project, you know, to go right and you go in Shaker, we actually just spent taxpayer, local taxpayer money to fix Taylor Road, which is Enfield connecting to you, which is beautiful, and again, you know, getting to ninety-one, you end up going through a lot of the residential, residential areas, which I understand, not your issue, but I just wanna say, as we've, I know we've personally reached out to your town a year ago, I understand you've had some changeover in folks who run the town, great to work with, we actually started the conversation of extending the trail, hopefully into Enfield and down to East Windsor. I understand, like I said, things changed, folks running your government, but they were great to work with when we started this project, we actually were talking to some people in Boston as well, how to, you know, how to generate this. So when someone says the rail's coming, I'm not, I don't know, I'll say I respectfully disagree with that, and, because again, we have other ideas, but we'd like to do in Enfield, just to give you some perspective here, and then again, you know, when it comes to traffic, I can already tell you, we're already dealing, it's just, not, again, not your issue, but we're already having enough problems with traffic coming backdoor, there's a lot of folks that wanna use ninety-one, you know, and again, it's interesting when you do a traffic study, you know, it always never seems to generate more traffic, and there's not, again, hey, folks have a right to make business, I'm not trying to argue against their business, I'm sure they're, you know, do a great job in your town, but the fact that, again, I appreciate the opportunity for allowing me to speak here, that again, there, for us, you know, we're, you know, we have those two lakes that are, but, you know, your, your property, and you guys have always been good neighbors, in my opinion, and all I ask is if whatever happens, that you please connect, your folks connect with the town of Enfield and our state reps, so we can come to a conclusion, because again, I, you know, like I said, I wanna be clear, I can say, personally speaking myself, I wanna see a trail going from Enfield, and we'd love to have it connect to East Long Meadow, you know, I can tell you that, personally, I'm only speaking for myself. So I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know who you spoke to, D O T, we actually had them before the council a few years ago with this very issue, so again, this hasn't, it's been a public issue in our town, just so you know, just you have the information, and again, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, I mean, again, really is, it's, I know it's rare that you allow folks from outside towns, we, we're front in our town, we'd be probably, you know, we'd be a little bit probably tough, we'd be up front, but thank you very much, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, thank you.
Can I answer a question?
Sure.
So just as, it's two twenty out, out of Long Meadow, right, that goes by the prison?
Correct.
Then down into the, to the highway?
You either can go, you either can go what's called Shaker, our Shaker Road?
Yeah.
Or you can actually connect to what's called Brainerd, I don't know if you know Brainerd, most, I think someone said the GPS, most aren't gonna go all the way to Hazard Ave, which I'm sure if you've been there, the traffic going from Hazard to ninety-one is significant, so what happens is a lot of time, these trucks at Enfield go down some of these side roads, which aren't meant to handle truck traffic, and, you know, yes, it gets into ninety-one, yeah, up front, but obviously, it creates for us some of our own issues when it comes to, yeah, because those are our neighborhoods.
But, but Lego was built a number of years ago?
Correct.
And the roads were improved at that time?
We've actually, and just so you know, in Enfield, we've actually spent, the taxpayers have spent millions of dollars over the last twenty years to improve our roads, so yeah, we, we actually do, we go to bonding, and we bond out the roads.
So, so they are set up for truck traffic that?
Well, again, not the, not the residential.
Not the residential, but it's the main road that goes right?
Right, but my point is, right, if you're coming through Taylor Road, your GPS sends you all the way to Hazard Ave, and once you know how much, how much traffic is on Hazard Ave, what happens, a lot of these trucks go down these side roads, which weren't built for, that's what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think, you know, I can speak to the whole board, I think we try to be as open as possible, obviously, it's not lost upon us that there's folks nearby here, or right over the border. Is there anybody?
Good evening, Ralph Page, one thirty-seven Peace Road. As you know, I'm also the town council president, but I'm here speaking as an individual. I'm just curious on this, the waste facility, are we looking strictly building materials like wood, like when you tear down a house, or are we looking outside material as far as dirt, bricks, stuff on that idea, or is it a combination of both? So I know when brick comes in, concrete and stuff, like at Plaza Excavating, they actually grind it up, it goes out of the truck. Are you still looking at doing that? And well, if you, if so, is that gonna be done within the building or outside of the building?
Everything's done within the building.
Okay, so if you're crushing or whatever, crusher will be inside the building and all?
That material specifically, maybe held off site and crush?
Okay. Okay, so inside the building, it'll be like up on Rose Street, where a truck comes in, dumps it, separates? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Is there anybody else, public? Come up, identify us.
Good evening, Lori Parker, one oh five Cottage Road, Enfield, Connecticut. Again, thank you for letting us attend. As your neighbor, I would like to convey my concerns and opposition to the proposal of implementing a construction debris recycling center adjacent to the reservoir that feeds Shaker Pines Lake. First, I'd like an understanding of how we got here, pardon my ignorance, but on the traffic study, it titles this as an expansion of the waste facility, but the application titles it an application for a recycling waste facility. It's apparent this is already in operation and was previously approved. I was just kinda looking for a brief overview of when this began and what this application is actually requesting. I don't recall ever being notified or informed of a waste management facility, and certainly would have expressed concern years ago, especially in this location. This could not be a worse location for our lake, but I see how it would be good for East Long Meadow, because it is on the border of Enfield, one may as well consider it in Enfield, as it really has minimal impact to East Long Meadow. Again, as stated before, it was in the application referencing the trucks would exit Deer Park Circle and head to Enfield, and it is our lake that is also most effective, even though the application states all is done to protect the abutting East Long Meadow property, which there really isn't much, because it's so close to our border, we are really the abutting property. I can see last year, our lake president went out there and saw mounds of dirt and no protection to the reservoir and expressed concerns, and as of today, she has not received any resolution. Many other things go through my mind when I think about what is proposed here, starting with the most recent recycling facility fire in Ohio. The fire made me think of what could happen if there was a fire here, which fire department would be the first responder? It's closest to Enfield, and to add insult to injury, there's another proposal to put an eight hundred and nineteen thousand square foot warehouse in the same parcel abutting this property, where the railway will run through. The warehouse proposal is extinguishing the easements that provided fire department access from the back entrance. It also proposes putting the building over the fire access pond that currently exists with this warehouse, there will be no back access and no fire pond to prevent fire on our side of the border. I then started thinking about train derailments, and with all the recent derailments, we've been hearing about, what happens if it derails in Enfield? Whose issue does it become to address? This area was planned to be an extension of the Redstone Trail, and we have been work, working towards a rail to trail here. Now we are facing oversaturation with industry, combining this construction demolition, rail transporting debris through the Bacon Road property, along with a massive warehouse with almost two hundred truck bays, will essentially turn this area between two lakes into a massive industrial zone. It's not clear in anything I've read in this site plan application where this debris is being transported to, where is the end point? Is it going to Enfield, East Windsor, or Hartford? I would like to request that this hearing be extended. I would like to request that this hearing be extended so that we may engage proper expertise to review this site plan and the impacts protecting our abutting properties. The application states it's protecting the East Long Meadow abutting properties and no mention of us when the southern abutting property is just a tiny space of open space in East Long Meadow. It's also stated, there's no abutting agricultural property, but south of that small space is farm fields dating back as far as the 1800s, when the Shakers owned that land. The GIS indicates the western border is well within the Jawark water course and has already been exposed to fill activities. And the southern woodland area is completely within the upland review area and has also undergone clearing and contaminated fill and dumping. It is also evident on the western areas adjacent to the headwaters of Freshwater Brook, also within some upland review area. The continuity of wetland water courses in their intended review areas is clearly within mass DEP purview for the entirety of Jawark reservoir and its dam overflow and the entirety of the inflow area for Jawark into Shaker Pines Lake. And all along the outflow of Jawark Brook is under the authority of the Connecticut DEP. Wetlands should be protected. Again, we speak to the abutting properties in East Long Meadow. Please afford the same to your other state neighbors. And in regard to soliciting experts for possible intervention at this short notice, I have some notes from a brief consultation below. And again, please continue the hearing so we may have a thorough evaluation. Observations below. There are no test holes or infiltration tests for the two underground stormwater systems. It cannot be confirmed that the soils on the site are suitable for the stormwater system. Is there ledge or high groundwater which would compromise the function of the system? No pollutant loading analysis has been done, which demonstrates that non-point pollutant loads will be reduced by stormwater system. What types of material will be stored in outside areas which will drain into infiltrate infiltration system number one? Why isn't the runoff from area 2013 being directed to an onsite system versus the system in the road? How will runoff be treated in the dry well too? In the stormwater report, they claim an infiltration rate of 8.227 inches per hour, but there are no test results to document this claim. This is generic value for sandy soils. And again, we have many concerns and are asking for more time to get our information together. Thank you again for letting us attend.
Don't leave.
Okay.
So there is a mutual aid compact between the Esau Meadow Fire Department and the Enfield Fire Department. We saw this when a developer in Enfield bought property in Esau Meadow and developed a solar farm. And it went back and forth for about two months. So we're aware of that. Where's the closest fire station in Enfield to your property?
It would be Shaker Pines Fire Department.
So how far away is that?
I would guess 300 acres.
No, distance wise, the fire department to your property?
Oh, from my house?
Yeah.
Three miles.
Probably about the same.
Three miles?
No, maybe a mile, mile and a half.
By the road? As a crow flies or by the road? It's not a mile.
Maybe two miles by the road.
Possibly. Okay. And Esau Meadow Fire Department to Shaker Road?
I do not know where the Esau Meadow Fire, that's why I asked.
Probably two miles. Okay. Probably two miles. Okay. So the owners wouldn't specifically be on Enfield. You mentioned a 200 dock facility being built. Where is that being built?
On 35 Bacon Road, where the rail will be going through.
So please familiarize me with Bacon Road.
If you're looking at that map right there where the yellow is, where it says site, in that border right there to Enfield, right across the border, that entire site.
So like the brown?
Yes, that entire field will be a massive 819,000 square foot warehouse with 188 truck bays. And I just mentioned that traffic might come this way as well.
What's that? The south?
Some of it.
Portion. So next to the, essentially next to the prison?
Yes, between the two lakes, actually. It's going to be sandwiched right to it. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's right, that whole tan park right south of your.
Yeah, the abutting property.
Yep, it's the abutting property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I think, yeah, I was going, that was going to be my main point. I mean, we have a municipal agreement. This has been sort of discussed previously. You know, I know, speaking, I don't want to speak on behalf of, but, you know, we obviously follow when it is a public hearing, which is, which this is the case of properly notifying who would fall within that. A little different when it's out of the state. You know, I think we try to be, you know, things are online, power of the internet now, has the ability for people to, you know, look on our town website. And, you know, obviously, we would understand that. I'm sure Enfield wouldn't always 100% of the time go out of the way to inform us on everything that may happen. And that, I mean, obviously, there's a lot in Enfield that's just there. There's prison, there's major development, major corporations, whereas we have somewhat kind of smaller facilities here. But we do definitely understand that and hear that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd press a couple.
Yeah.
And these are more general, more spontaneous, I think, specific, the comments at this time. But the, I should have remembered this, there's a notice of intent on the property when it was purchased that allows this project. So Bailey, I can send that to you, to share with the board. And also, Charlie's nephew Will sent over the contact for the rail transportation officer with the Connecticut Bureau of Public Transportation. So I'll reach out and get what information I can to share with you.
Yeah, I think above all else, I mean, I think it will be, I would say, I mean, we haven't voted on it, but, or there's not a motion, but I would be supportive of continuing it just because it seems like we need to just kind of edit a few things that were mentioned earlier. Having that letter or kind of indication would be relevant to base on what we heard. So, you know, for those reasons. But I do want just any last public, I'm sorry.
Just to address the comments relating the Stormwater Management Report. There is in the Stormwater Management Report, an assessment by a GTE engineer, which the stormwater infiltration rate was based on. 8.27 inches per hour is not a generic assignment. It is a classification or so from the DEP, a stormwater management policy. So the individual who provided those comments clearly wasn't familiar with the Massachusetts stormwater policy. If he was, then he would have known that those are standard rates. But that system has been designed to comply with the DEP policy.
Are there any other, just while we're wrapping up here, any other public comments? Okay, hearing none right now. So we've obviously gone through some testimony. Obviously, there's, I think, still some questions or things that we just want to make sure we have information of, it seems like. So what is the pleasure of the board?
So let's, let's just recap what we're kind of looking for.
Yes.
So we're looking for some edits associated with the traffic study. I think we pointed them out to you. We're looking for what Mr. Levine just referenced. We are also going to also get a letter from Rob Leveque. You indicated that we'd get that, indicating that we didn't have to go to mass DEP, correct?
I think conservation, or was it to go to conservation or DEP? Both.
Can you clarify that, Mr. Levine?
I can flip through my file. I don't want to mischaracterize. I'll send it and.
Fair enough.
And the notice of intent as well, which was the.
Well, the concern was that somehow that this was in violation of, you know, federal law. So we'd like to get some verification for that.
Well, that's an overall information I have.
Yeah, great. Good.
Yeah, I think that pretty much covers it now. Yes.
Looking for an updated site plan with the trees on it. Just.
Yes, that is right. That as well. Are we missing Russ?
Oh, yeah, the confirmation of the rail.
Yes, I think we, we had already, Russ had already said that. So, yeah, confirmation of the rail. I think it's just, we need to make sure, you know.
It's pivotal.
We're hearing, yeah, we're hearing two pretty relevant sides that have obviously, you know, experience or the status. So making sure that we can kind of reconcile that as a board, because obviously, that would kind of change the layout of things pretty significantly.
And just for our BHP Consultants, can you give specifics on what you want to see in the traffic study? I know there were some changes we can make on, that's what Mr. Denver brought up. Was there any?
Well, if you, if you watch the meeting, the first 10 minutes, you'll be able to see what they were.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, I think my question more specifically, are we adding an intersection?
Yeah. I mean, we, I know, Pete, you had mentioned that. I mean, we could. I mean, we don't know yet what's going to happen with 330. That's the only thing.
Yeah.
But we have to have a what if. We have to have a what if.
But I don't think.
Hate to use the what if, but we need it.
But I don't think we can, I don't think it's fair.
Yeah.
Forcing to do.
To force them to do the other intersection.
No.
When we still don't know how this board might vote about traffic flowing out of 330 Chestnut Street.
Okay.
So I think that would be an undue burden on them to spend extra money to have to do that when we don't know.
We're going to approve.
We don't know whether what we're going to do.
Turns out a 330, so.
So we'll save you some money. So.
Consultants are like that.
Petitioners do, though.
Yeah. But can I just?
Yes. I just want to thank everybody for your, you know, for your knowledge about this and your presentation. I think it's very, very cool what, what you're thinking of doing, taking everything that's outside, putting it inside. You know, the thought process, whether the rail comes or not, using the rail. Very, very creative. You know, there's a lot of positives associated with this. Putting up the new building brings tax dollars to the town. You're doing employment, which is always important for the town. So I do applaud you.
And also, my experience is that when you put these structures in the ground, they said it improves the flow of water. So the people that are concerned about the lake being filled up with sediment, they should be happy that if the project does get approved, that it's there because it'll actually decrease the amount of sediment going into the adjoining pond and into Crescent.
So I'll make a motion to continue this hearing till. What's a good date for you, Mr. Levine? I don't think you want to come May 2nd when we're dealing with 330 Chestnut Street.
No, definitely. I appreciate.
So the 16th of May?
May 16th, and then after that would be June 20th, because the election is on the 6th.
Yeah, we only have one meeting as of right now in June. So I think it's, I guess the question of the board, do we? Would we, do you think a month would be good or?
Giving time to them to get everything that we need.
What would you, Attorney Lieutenant, feel more inclined to do, the 16th of May or going, going into June?
16th of May would be all right.
So at 6 o'clock?
At 6 o'clock.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded, continuing the public hearing until May 16th. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, extensions that carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We appreciate your time tonight.
Absolutely. All right. I think we have one more item of business. We have the director's report, Bailey, if you'd like to.
Yeah, people are still here, so. So just the last thing is just that a reminder for the board to complete the conflict of interest training and send that confirmation to me when it's done. I think we have until June, I want to say the end of June, but just in case.
June 1.
June for two. So get it to me before that, if you can. A couple of those, actually, I think. I got yours.
I have a document.
I was doing it.
And they'd send that over via email. We need a link again. I got it. At this time, I think that's everything, unless anyone has any questions for me.
No, I think that's. Great. I know I'm going to finish up fairly soon. Also want to thank LCAP for the recording tonight. Is there any other items?
I want.
To address.
Bring it back.
Has anybody else?
I just don't need you to. Oh, I won't. I have a file.
Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
So as long as you're comfortable not losing.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? People were, motion's been made to adjourn. Any discussion on it?
Would you say there was a second already?
There is a second, yeah.
Third.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.